I'd like to call the order of the committee of the whole for June 22nd, 2021 at 5:35 PM. Roll call.
Elder Persons Madden.
Here.
Kubaki.
Here.
Engelhardt is not present. Capusta is not here. Terrence.
Here.
Hamel.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Thank you. Statement of public notice?
This meeting was noticed in accordance with the open meeting law.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
All's in favor of the agenda as presented say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? New business. Update on Entercon Development. Alicia.
You're probably gonna have to turn that mic on.
Hello? It is on. I think you came out here. It's working.
Maybe just raise it up.
Scott will help you.
Yeah.
Hello?
There you go.
All right, thank you. Hi, I'm Alicia from Entercon.
Thank you for coming in. The council is just kinda looking for an update and I'm sure they'll ask some questions, but about anything new as far as development on the vacant areas or how things are going overall for the development in the Tiff district?
So, overall, things are going really well for the apartments. They're 100% occupied. So, that's, they're completed. You saw the final left one on the asphalt probably for the apartment section. The strip center portion, we still have that former IMX Pilates space that we're marketing. There's two people kind of seeming interested in it. One's a restaurant user. I'm not sure how viable that option is, but we're still pursuing it. And then the other one is like a chiropractic, medical, physical therapy type use. So, hopefully that space will be released soon. Andrew, who owns Lucky at the Lodge, is putting a door opening in right now to combine the former Spitfire space with the Lodge as one restaurant in the hopes to kind of pick back up the catering, I think, that we lost during the pandemic portion. So, things seem to be going well there. The parcel B, which was the grocery site, we have one grocery user that has reached out to us that is potentially still interested. So, we've been emailing back and forth some options for it to be a smaller scale grocery store, but nothing formally to say who the user is yet or if we're actually gonna get anywhere with them.
All right. Does anyone have any specific questions for her?
Are other options, I'm assuming that other options are being explored for that site?
Yes, we did a preliminary concept plan that shows two outlets in the front with a smaller retail building in the back. So, it's being marketed that way as well. We'd sell the land to somebody to come and develop it if they wanted to, or we'd develop it if we had a user that wanted to do some sort of freestanding option there. Some of the users we get are things that aren't approved in approved uses, so we'd have to come back and talk about them. Some of them probably don't really make sense for the whole downtown Muskego.
Like a foundry or something?
Yeah, like an industrial type user, you know, like car type shop, like things like that. Not that we're saying no, we're just don't think they're the best use for the site. And then we have that little parcel A, which is behind the pond, that once we find a user for that, we'd develop that. Really, the big goal is that grocery anchor site to get something done there.
Any other questions? All right. Well, I appreciate you coming in.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thanks for having me.
Thanks.
Bye.
If there's anything that you need from the city as far as if you do have a user coming in and, you know, just feel to reach out. Discussions regarding solar power at municipal buildings. This was requested by one of the aldermen.
Alderman. Thanks. I thought we should just look into it. I don't know if I really requested, but.
It's not much.
Yeah. So, Alderman, Wolf requested to kind of look at some solar power, kind of look based off of Walatosa. So, what you have in front of you is an article from the one that Walatosa just did. They did two of them. Well, they did one on their DPW building, and then they did a solar power on their City Hall. On the back, I wrote the website. That is the actual contractor who actually put it in. If you go there, there's a pretty cool drone video of their installation, and there's a lot of frequently asked questions. So, it'll give you a little bit more information. The biggest thing after I reached out to Dave Simpson and talked to him about it, the actual cost of the project was $600,000, not $700,000 that they budgeted for. They got about $40,000 worth of grants. The best thing is the focus on energy. We use them to get grants for doing our LEDs. That's probably your best bet to get a grant. The grant sizes are going down. They got a bigger one for DPW, but they got a smaller one for City Hall. As technically solar power's been getting cheaper, the grants have been getting smaller. If you are trying to get a grant maybe through Renew Wisconsin or Office of Energy Innovation, you have to get creative. For example, you have to have some type of battery storage where you're gonna store the power on site. You have to go above and beyond what you would do. The, one thing just to let you know, is 60% of a job is usually material, 40% is labor. Material has gone up 15% for the year already. So, just, I'm getting, I'm throwing all this out there. Dave says his project is about being conservative. He thinks 15 years he'll get the return back. So, couple other things. We would look at, it's called monthly net metering, what that means. So, in a nutshell, you can't, if you have your project more than 300 kilowatts, okay, that means if you're under, you can bank the credits. For example, we're not here on the weekends, but we're gonna get power. We wanna have that so that during the weekday, we can offset that back and forth, okay? If you go over the 300 kilowatts, then you're in a different animal, and then they'll purchase it back, We Energies, but for a smaller amount. So, they're both projects. They built it like 299.9 kilowatts. So, they're not, and he recommends looking at this, but the best way is that's your bigger, biggest bang for your buck if you would, if we decide to do this, or you want me to look even further. So, I'm just giving you all these things. Dave said it's better to issue an RFP instead of publicly bidding this project, cuz everyone's got a different system. So, just kind of a couple of other things. The grants, focused on energy, like I said before, they're getting smaller. The best thing, when I talk to the focused on energy guy and everything for us, which was what we're doing, is we're doing the low hanging fruits. So, pretty much, next capital, I'm gonna request one more changing light poles to LED, and then pretty much we got 99% done. This year, they're doing Pioneer, which I believe they did. They did Test Corners. Next one is Moreland. Then we got all the main light poles. Most of our buildings are LED. Hitting those first is probably the best thing to do, cuz then you get, if you wanna do it for renewable energy source, then your renewable energy source is doing the lowest amount, cuz it's LED. If you that understands, we're not sucking up a lot of power when we do renewable energy. That's about it in a nutshell. If your request or what you guys wanna decide, and budgeting's kind of the talk next and say, you want me to look at this, then we start doing cost and figuring out where we would do this or wanna do it. Ideally, the only, the three main locations, here, flat roof, over there, parking lot of the new PD, flat roof, and DPW. The only good thing about this is all three of them are brand new roofs. So, this takes about 25 years lifespan usually, Dave said, but you want a roof that's brand new, so it's not like, hey, guess what? Our roof's gotta be done in two years, and the system's on there. So, the one good thing is the three locations, which would make sense if you guys would let them do it, is brand new roofs. So, that's a good thing, so.
Scott, are those fields that we have large enough to provide an element of power?
I don't know. I mean, I-
Their field covers a vast amount of space.
Yeah, I have not even, you know, I mean, the next step would be to get the contractor who was at the end to come in and say, okay, look at our square footage for the three buildings, and then start figuring out cost, but also a system that's under 300 kilowatts and going through that. I haven't even touched any of that or any, you know, this was more just, hey, let me give you an overview, give me some ideas of grants, and that was it. But, if the next step would, again, any vendor will wanna come in and give you a cost and show what it is, and they'll probably say, okay, based off of your thing, you're $10 to $15 a square foot or something for it. But, that would be the next step, because once I get that cost, if I would put in a capital, I would put a capital in, like, that's how I generate a cost for you guys to say, do you wanna do this or not?
So, Scott, do you think, and I'm glad you guys brought this up, there was a time years ago when we talked about, the landfill is selling energy to We Energies. Can we be tapping into that here?
Well, we sell, they sell, landfill sells.
Gas.
Gas to MMSD.
Right.
So, that's what they sell to them. I don't think any of our systems are set up to take that type of gas as their system is. So, I don't know if we can buy that gas, you know, if you want us to use that gas to power our buildings. They're using that-
Would it be more expensive than, you know what I mean, buying that generator? I know we looked at it a few years ago and they've-
I would have to look at it again and see what you guys wanna do. I know that you wanna a certain type of pipe, you want an epoxy covered coating on the inside for that type of gas. But, again, you know, none of our systems were ever designed to do either, so we'd have to see what we'd have to get. Again, it's, a lot of it is, next step is talking to a vendor and seeing what we wanna do and getting prices for you. I didn't do any of that stuff, so.
Just touching on the MMSD, if I remember correctly, the pipe that they're using to get, cuz right now they're selling it, it's being used down in Jones Island for either power or heat down there at the methane. I believe they had an existing pipe that they were able to coat.
They had some and they built some.
They built, they spent millions.
Yeah, they built a pipe and they have some-
But there was a big chunk, especially going through Franklin, I think, that they had existing already that they were able to utilize. I mean, I'm just thinking the cost of what it would be to run a pipe from the landfill here around the Big Lake.
Well, I know they're not, they're only using, I mean, they're burning off more than they're selling half the time.
Yeah. But.
Well, I, for one, would be interested to see if our fields are large enough to provide the energy that we'd need.
Yeah, and I think I can, I can get a vendor in there to kind of look at our buildings and see what it is. I mean, any vendor will wanna do that, you know, cuz if they have a chance to bid on this job or something like that, that's, you know, what we can look at, so.
So, just doing quick math on here, which I know you're not supposed to do on TV, there-
You said there'd be no math.
You said that the payback's 15, about 15 years.
That was what Dave said, and he's being conservative.
So, if I'm using their numbers, it was $600,000 investment, 15 years payback. At the end of 15 years, everything, you know, if you're, you're saving that same amount in energy, it's about $40,000 a year. So, if you had an additional 10 years of life, you're getting $400,000 in savings on a $600,000 investment overall. I mean, above and beyond that, so about $1 million on a $600,000 investment over 25 years.
And I'm sure they'll have to be-
That's provided everything works right.
The energy costs are gonna change too, so.
Right. Well, but the more the energy costs, the more you're saving. So, it's actually, the more they go up, the more the savings is. But I guess the real thing to look at is, do we wanna use, there's research, I mean, there's, we have expenses every year, capital expenses, that, you know, doesn't make sense to borrow for those versus, you know, if we're using, say, landfill funds for this. Well, ultimately, those, that money goes to something, so. It's just a matter of what we wanna allocate it to.
I mean, the LED, just what we're doing with the light poles and stuff like that, it's relatively cheap idea, and it's a low hanging fruit. It makes perfect sense.
That makes a lot of sense.
It really does. I mean, most communities are doing it, and if they're not doing it, they're finding some way to try to do it. We're lucky enough that we don't have a lot of light poles. So, like I said, one more year of capital, and we pretty much hit everything. So, it's kind of nice. And most of our buildings are brand new, list stations, everything, we're going right away with LED, so.
I just thought it was a good idea to look at, cuz they were doing it, and, just to get a rough idea, I don't know if 15 years is, is good at this point. I mean, of course, we know that the price of everything's gonna go up, and I understand that the panels might be getting cut off from China, and there's a lot of things that be going on, and the battery storages are changing, and they're probably gonna get less expensive, you know, and do we wanna do something like that on site to the storage? I mean, there's a lot of questions here, and is this $600,000 a realistic number? You know what I mean? And with the rebates, when I looked at some of the rebates, I mean, I'm seeing like $20,000. I thought there was more rebate money out there, but I understand that the current administration is budgeting $58 billion for energy, renewable energy. Now, I don't know what that breaks down to and, you know, how it can come down to a little city like us, but I think at this point, 600,000, I mean, it's nice to look at and keep our eyes on. I think that possibly there might be more rebate money down the road, and that might be the time to do it, you know?
Yeah, focused on energy, when I asked them, they actually have more money for communities to go to LED lights than actual renewable energy, just to let it, you know? They just have bigger budgets for grants.
Well, that's what focused on energy really stands. It's that and the HVAC reduction of coolers and stuff like that, refrigeration.
We got them both for, the both buildings here, so.
Yeah. But no, I appreciate you looking into this. I mean, I didn't expect it to be this fast, but, you know, it's nice that you can reach out to Dave, because at least we have a, someone we know that we can talk to, you know, and-
Yeah, and check, seriously, check the website out in the back. That's the vendor that did it. I think it's worth-
Yeah, that's how I kinda saw it originally. I saw Arts Electric was in there, yeah.
Yeah, it's worth checking it out, just if you have to answer any other questions.
But even banking and selling back, it's still 15 years, huh? Cuz you'd think, you'd think a building like this would, would be able to sell some energy back.
Well, selling the back, that's the thing, that's the problem. He says, if you're, when you're banking, it's monthly though. So, you only, what you're trying to do is, that's why it's called the monthly net metering. You are trying, you're, it's a best advantage for the city to get the full benefit of collecting it. If you go over 300, they'll clearly buy it back from you, but it'll be a smaller percentage, he said. And, and he goes, that's why they all decided to go this way. So, for example, their City Hall or DPW, they could've done a larger system, however, they, it would've been longer to get the rate of return back, because if you don't use it all, you only can sell it back at a, at a small fraction, so.
Yeah, well, I guess they gotta resell it and do work and everything, so.
Yeah.
They gotta try to make money on it, but yeah, that makes sense. No, I appreciate the, the work on it.
All right. Any other questions? Thanks, Scott.
Yep.
Moving on to the next agenda, I'd discuss 2022 planning calendar and budget goals. So, in your packet, there is a sheet that starts with, has the budget calendar, starting with today's date of talking about our goals and timeframes and kind of breaks it all First of all, we'll start with that. Is there any questions on that? Part of this is getting, unless if you're, do you wanna feed anything into this? Part is, it's getting pushed back because our reeval is being delayed right now. There's some issues, complications going on, I guess, with the vendor, is the best way of saying it. There's some illnesses, and so we're pushed back about a month, is it? Yeah, so. Any questions on the calendar? All right, the next sheet, actually, it goes on, talks about the goals. Really isn't anything different in there from last year, with the exception of, I would like some feedback. So, a couple months ago, we talked, actually, maybe about a month ago, about possibly creating a revolving fund loan for sewer backups. So, the two potential funding sources of that would be the revolving loan fund that's in there, or residual Tiff capital improvement fund. So, first of all, I wanna know if there's any interest. We have not gotten, we've gotten zero follow-up from any, anyone about wanting to take advantage of that once we mentioned it. So, do we wanna go through the expense of, I mean, it's not, it's not a simple thing for staff to set up this fund and then manage it if there's no demand for it at this point. And then, on top of that, we could also use, we're gonna have capital costs this year. This is all stuff that, if we take it out and put it in this fund, that's not money we can use for any capital expenses that'll come up this year. So, we're kind of robbing from that. I'm just wondering, what, what is the priority of the council at this point on that?
I guess I'm surprised, but I guess I'm not. Why do something if there's no need?
That's my thought, but. You know, I could, we can always revisit it if all of a sudden, next month, people say, by the way, what happened with that? We'd like to take advantage of it, but I would've thought those would've came in by So, should we hold on that?
Sure.
All right. The other request I'm gonna have this year, and I mean, I'm sure Mayor Chavarotti asked the same thing, and I think I mentioned it last year, and every year we end up at the same spot, but we do spend lots of time with staff and ourselves going through different steps of the budget, having staff come in and justify different expenses, and everything's okay, 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 and then we get to the actual day we're voting on the budget, and there, there's problems. So, I guess I'm just gonna ask a friendly thing, that let's be involved through the budget process, and we'll do our best to kind of give you where we are on target and what impact things will have. But I'd like to get a budget out there by, you know, when we're, we're here to approve it in November, or October, November, when we get to that point that we all can agree upon, and, you know, if there's some, if someone has an objection to something, and you're in a minority throughout the whole thing, feel free to vote no at the end, but if you're quiet during the whole thing, and at the end you bring it up that I don't like certain, you had an option to weigh in, and we had an opportunity to maybe make changes throughout the thing, throughout the process, but it's just a request. Obviously, you all vote how you wanna vote. I just would like to have a budget that we all have buy-in on, so.
No, no, I agree. I think what happened last time is the funding source changed, and then it became a good idea and then became a bad idea, and that's, that was the dilemma I had. So, it's not that I don't agree or disagree, you know, it's just, that's, that's what happened. We changed the funding sources to change the percentages, and because of a fund was good, and then it became not a good idea, so we should all be on that same page then.
Fair enough.
I think for my end too, it's a, I know you can't give us the end picture, but if we could, like, hey, this is what we're shooting for, the, this is the percentage of potential increase, decrease, whatever, and then we can look at some of those things. It's hard for me to have somebody come in and, hey, we're gonna pitch a $40,000 tech improvement, and me not necessarily knowing in that moment, what is that end impact on the final bottom line if we hold that till the end without sort of having an idea, hey, if we include all these things, these are, this is gonna be the end result, so that then it allows a little more analytical approach to say, this is gonna cost us an extra 2% this year if we approve all the stuff that's there. And I don't know how we do that in a way that doesn't shoot everything down at one point, and also sort of that give and take. And I don't know how that plays out, but I think that's where I was at last year, obviously being new in it. You know, it, it's hard to have those objections until you get to the bottom line and say, okay, this is what that costs. Be like, oh, wait a minute, maybe we do need to revisit.
So, as these numbers can become available, so right now, one of the budget goals in here, the number one is to, well, apply any net, net new growth allowed for the state, per the state levy. So, essentially, any new growth that we had will, costs will, we're gonna be, we're gonna be budgeting for that, because we have adding expenses every year. So, what, we're gonna have all that in there. We'll get to a point where everyone's gonna make their requests of stuff. We'll look at the budget, and it's either gonna get to that point or it's not. And then I usually take it and try pairing it back down to, funding it down to those, the levy caps where we are, and present that back to you. So, we'll try to communicate that in a more timely manner, I guess, that, okay, I'm, here's the cuts I'm making from what was presented. Do you guys agree or disagree? And here's where we're at. So, I mean, under no circumstance are we ever gonna be over the levy caps, because we can't by law, and we always try, and there's other, you know, expenditure restraint and things like that that we always wanna keep, because we end up losing more money than, you know, in different scenarios if we don't follow those things, so. I'll do my best to try to keep you guys more informed through, as we go out through the system, so you guys can be more active participants in it at the, you know, so we don't get to that eleventh thing. And like I said, if there's something throughout there you just, you disagree with, and everyone else agrees with it, and at the end you're like, I'm not gonna vote for the budget because of that, that's fine. You made yourselves, you made yourself clear throughout the whole thing then, so that makes more sense to me. Sharon, is there anything you'd wanna add or that I should be?
Just to add, as we look, like, through our, we, under, we'll be getting an update, so that should help our debt service, which, for projection purposes, what you're talking about, should be easier.
Well, I know in your budgets, and maybe this is gonna aid with John's question, is that if we relate what we're presenting, what you're presenting, what the staff is presenting, to last year's, it'll give us an idea of where we are as far as shortfalls or, or whatevers.
And that is, it is always in there. It's under the department requests, and you can see the differential, and then if you look at the very bottom line, you can see what adjustments that the mayor made with staff.
Sure.
Cuz you'll see the department requests, and you will see the mayor's budget next to it. So, that is all.
Great, thank you.
The data's there.
Everyone's comfortable with this process going forward then? All right. Thank you. Any communications, Miss Lani's business?
Update on hiring a HR person?
All right. Well, the update is, we haven't started yet, cuz it's scheduled for third quarter, so I was going to-
Which starts in two weeks.
What?
Third quarter starts in two weeks.
The end of third quarter, I'm sorry.
Okay.
It's scheduled for the end of, so fourth quarter is when that person's scheduled to start, so October, yeah, that would be. My plan is to start in August. I'm gonna work with, we have a consultant right now that we use for HR questions and things like that. They are a source for helping form that job description.
Okay.
We'll go over that, and once I get that job description from them, I'll bring it back to a committee of the whole, have you guys weigh in, make sure that we're looking for the right things, and then we'll start posting for the job.
Okay, thank you.
You look like you have something you wanna say. No?
About something else.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I was just waiting to make sure we were done. I noticed that we took off the golf carts off the, the thing, and-
It's coming back. We're just fine tuning it, and I didn't wanna bring it, you're half baked.
That's good, cuz I was thinking that we should bring it back to Cowal first, so we can have a discussion on it before it goes right to the next process. I mean, I'm, I'm still trying to figure out how this came up, because a guy got a ticket, and now it's on the agenda right away to get pushed through for one guy that wants a golf cart, cuz he's mad, cuz he got a ticket. That's how I look at this. I, I just, I'm going through the smells test on this, and it's still a can of worms.
I'm sorry you're looking at it that way, but we've been working on this for over a year, and it hasn't been-
Well, it hasn't been through us for a year, and we went through one discussion, and we're already going up to a first reading, and I was looking at that, and I'm glad it's off, cuz I was gonna actually ask to take it off and move it back down to a discussion. So, rather than putting it in there, we can see what's gonna go in there, and we can put our other ideas into it if we wanna do that, and then move it up to council.
I thought this was like a byproduct of, we had a business that's now doing sort of rentals, and we're not-
We can't get too far into this, and you can do the request of having me go to a Cowal, but we can't do the discussion too much, you know? We could talk about a subject matter that you want brought back, but not the details of it, so.
Yeah.
I don't mean to cut you off, but I just gotta follow the law.
But yeah, I think, I'm just saying, I'd like to bring it back to Cowal before it goes up to, I mean, that's, maybe I'm alone on this, but I, I think that, I thought we were gonna have Jeff work on it and bring it back, and then discuss it. I mean, that's what I thought. Maybe I'm wrong. I don't know.
So, and I guess it's, it's up to the council how you wanna handle that going forward. I'll do it either way. it either way. We can, we can either bring it back to a Cowal, fine tune it into something. We can put it on a Cowal and then have it on the council for the same night, which I'd rather just, or we could just go straight to council with the first reading, which is typical of ordinances. You know, and then we, that's why we have two readings. We do the first reading. You have your opportunity to weigh in on what you want changed. Two more weeks before the actual final one gets done, we can have, you know, so you can have the discussion at council and just keep it moving, I guess.
Well, I want to make sure that we want to bring it up to council. I mean, I thought we were coming back to Cowal, but maybe, I don't know, I don't know if everybody was 100% on the same page when this was going on.
So what's the majority thought? Just bring it back for the first read, for the first reading, where we can fine tune it and essentially do what you want on that. You can make your changes and everything. You got two weeks before it comes back. Otherwise, we're really just dragging our feet on it at that point.
Well, I don't have a problem with bringing it back for the first reading and discussing it, but I would like the chief or somebody from the PD here at the same time.
They will be. And that's, that's why we're delaying it right now. We're working with them.
So if we bring it back for the first reading, basically, we'd be doing the same thing.
Yeah, just doing it.
And we would, as in Cowal, we would just be eliminating that step. Is that correct?
Yes.
We couldn't make changes to it.
Absolutely.
Discuss it during the first reading and everything else.
Yep.
So Cowal's would be kind of an extra.
It's just an extra meeting. It's an extra meeting.
Yeah, I understand that. I just thought that this was moving awful fast. I mean, you guys been working on it a year, but we, we didn't know that. So I mean, to me, it just looks like it's moving awful fast and.
And again, I apologize, but that really, that really is the process on all ordinances. We.
No, that's fine. I just looked at it as a guy got a ticket, and next thing we know, we're passing an ordinance to have everybody have golf carts. I mean, that's what, you know, if you look at the surface, I don't know what else you can say.
Not at all what happened. So.
I think we're making a little more of this.
Well, it was the way, maybe it was the way it was started at the presentation.
It started out of my head. However, you know, so I just got, for going forward on this, not just talking about this as far as what we're going to have on here. We've got a food truck ordinance, we've got other things. You know, typically, I bring it to Cowal if like, do you guys have interest in this? And then I bring it to council with the readings once we have it crafted. If you guys want me to change that process, just let me know. But our ordinance process does give that a month to really go through it. With you guys having a chance to weigh in on all ordinances, I don't see the need of going, once I get the go ahead to look at an ordinance, to bring it back to another Cowal, and then two more meetings.
Sure. I didn't understand. I guess I was just at the point, I didn't understand that Jeff was prepared to do this. I thought he was like, still gathering stuff, was going to present it, come back and present it. That's how I looked at it.
Yeah, no, and I brought it forward. We had it pretty much done when I first brought it up. I just wanted to let you weigh in before we did that.
I'm okay with it.
Anything else for communications? Hearing done. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourn.
Second.
All is in favor, say aye. Opposed. Adjourned at 6:04.